We'd like to call our meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone. If we could ask the city recorder, Ms. Gail, to do a roll call.
Lyndon Baines.
Here.
Charles Cooper.
Here.
Becky Duncan.
Here.
Vanessa Matthews.
Here.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Here.
The mayor is absent tonight due to a family emergency.
Okay, at this time, we'd like for Ms. Gail to read the minutes from last month.
Be it remembered that the Board of Mayor and Alderman met in regular monthly session Monday, July 10th, 2017, at 6:00 PM at City Hall in Jamestown, Tennessee, where the following proceedings were had, an inner two of record to wit. Present and presiding, the Honorable Darlene Monday Davis, Mayor, Gail Dishman, Recorder, and on a roll call by the city recorder, the following members of the Board were present: Lyndon Baines, Becky Duncan, Charles Cooper, Vanessa Matthews, and Elizabeth Pendergrass. Mayor Davis called the meeting to order and welcomed everyone for attending. The minutes from the previous meeting was read, and on a motion by Charles Cooper and seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board approved June 2017 minutes. On a motion by Lyndon Baines, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board approved special call minutes for 2017 of July. Mayor Davis then opened the floor to the public for grievances or discussion of any matter for which they were none. Mayor Davis then gave updates on all projects. Tom Bennett with Bennett Associates gave the engineer report. Bob Lane, the city building inspector, then gave the building inspector and codes report. Bailey Allred, city attorney, then gave the attorney's report. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass, the Board voted on a roll call vote, all four, none against, with Vanessa Matthews having recused herself from voting, to pass on second reading, ordinance 1750, the annexation of the Matthews property. On a motion by Lyndon Baines, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, to pass on the second reading, ordinance 1760, the budget of 2017-18. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, passed on second reading, ordinance 1770, to do away with comp time for all employees, and for the comp time remaining be grandfathered in and used within the physical year of 1718, and for which each employee not to exceed 40 hours a week in using their balance. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, the Board rejected the bid on the high-pressure extension on Wilder, on the Wilder project. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the bid for D&amp;M services on the Wilder project for $108,456. On a motion by Lyndon Baines, seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the change order number one, to deduct $15,320 from the $1056, bringing the price to $93,136 for the bid of the D&amp;M services. On a motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, passed for discussion and approval of the directional boring machine to the agenda. On the motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved Guardian Electric's bid to replace the beacon light at the airport of $24,999.99. On a motion by Lyndon Baines, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the financials for June 2017. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to pay the monthly bills for June of 2017. On a motion by Becky Duncan, seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the crack seal project to be advertised for bids at the airport. On a motion by Becky Duncan, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved for discussion and approval to the agenda. Oh, I left something off there. That was... On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, passed Resolution 918, drought management for the city of Jamestown. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the purchase of the boring machine for the gas department for Vermeer. It was a hundred and something thousand, I left that off. With no further business, on a motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board voted to adjourn. That was just extra in there, it's just gonna be taken out.
Besides that, is there any corrections to the minutes?
Yes, I'd like to request that on the, on the motion for the boring machine, that the amount $179,610 be added, please.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Lyndon Baines.
For.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Vanessa Matthews.
For.
All four, none against.
At this time, we would ask if anyone from the, the audience would like to address anything? Okay. So at this time, I would like to give an update for Ms. Darlene, an update on the jamboree. It was a good turnout, had lots of compliments, and a lot of compliments of having the jamboree behind the courthouse. If you've not been able to go out and see that, that's really good. The work that they've been doing, so that's her update. So now we can have a report from Tom Bennett, this city engineer.
Good evening, everybody. Couple things to report on the Wilder Highway gas project. They, Scotty wanted me to kind of brief you all, he couldn't be here tonight, but they, they did get the machine, and they did receive the training last week. And if you recall, the Vermeer was gonna come up and do the training on some actual bores for the project, so they did that. And I guess they did three days total of training for them. During that time, the city was able to accomplish 210 feet of directional boring on the Wilder gas project, particularly out in front of school. And interestingly, it was probably as difficult a bore as you could do, so the city got tremendous amount of training. And it was basically in solid rock, and so the, if you remember, the price of that, had you so contracted that out, would've been, in this case, about $21,000. So just two days of boring, two days of boring, you all were able to avert about $21,000, somewhere in that range of boring costs. So that all went very well, and they're progressing with the project, continuing to do bores and things like that along the Wilder Highway. The next topic is related to the main city pump station, as we talked about during the work session. Steve and I did take a minute during the two, during the meeting here to talk about maybe the approach, and I think that, I had suggested in the work session that we go ahead and go into a bid process, but I think perhaps if, I wanna step back from that recommendation and suggest that let Steve and I go and look at, look at the system. We're talking about adding a grinder pumps system to the pump station. Let us go look at it, and then come back to you, maybe at the next meeting, with a complete set of recommendations for the pump station. That way you can see, I guess, the bigger picture of what's necessary, and then by then, I think the city will have a much better feel for what they're wanting to do as far as the type of grinder or whatever. So I guess at this point, I'm not asking for any further consideration at this point. Mostly just to brief you during the work session about an issue, and that over the next month, we will try to put that on a bit more concise thing for y'all to consider for next meeting, if that's okay. And then the, Steve, did you wanna, you didn't want me to bring up anything on the water treatment plant, did y'all wanna add an item to your...
In the new?
Okay. Well, that concludes my update, that's mine.
Next, we'll, thank you, Tom. Next, we would get the report from the city builder, Bob Lane.
We've got two or three projects under construction, fast-paced across the road here. The building is finished, and they'll be open soon, as the sign says. We're doing a cleanup, we're getting ready to open. The farmer's furniture over there, next to Tractor Supply, we're gonna be working on that. But we're getting ready to, we're getting ready to have a large project over on Baby Street, those apartments. We're getting ready to do a rehab on all them apartments, so that will be, that'll be a very large project, be going on for a pretty good while. And that's all the projects I have working on that, present.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll hear from the city attorney, Freddie Allred.
Okay, so since we last, I was here last week, I'm currently working on, the dark sky ordinance has been a thing you guys have heard me talk a lot about. I gave the planning commission earlier this month the final version of that, or my final version of that, and I've handed that off to Bob Lane, who's looking at that and gonna give the planning commission a report at our next meeting to look at some of the measuring tools by which light pollution is handled. So I got a whole education in that process, and hopefully Bob's gonna educate us a little more. So anyway, so we, we did that, and the mayor also asked me to reach out to the park system and ask them, you know, if this is definitely something that they are still interested in us pursuing, and they expressed absolute support for that, and I expect, they're gonna be actually putting some things together and sending the city some letters in support of that, for those efforts. So I'm sure that'll be a topic of conversation in the coming months. And then I answered a couple of employment and labor law questions over that course of time, and also... There's something I'm missing. Oh, one of the things that also came to light during the, in the exploration of going through the penalty section of, of our current code, and trying to find what were appropriate penalties for violations in the building code, one of the things that came up is, I think we have a real lack of explanation or detailing in, in our code book. So I'm going to, working with the mayor, and we're trying to put something together to present to you guys. Also in the process of doing codification since 2011, which is a pretty big undertaking. It's working from 2011 until now, and we're getting pretty far along on that. And so we'll be talking to you more and trying to just streamline, always trying to look into making us as, having the best solid government we can, and I'm kinda glad to see things that we can have an opportunity to clean up and do a better job, and make it easier for our, our city judge, when he's faced with the situation, to know clearly how to, what he, what he needs to do, and what the appropriate penalties are, and that kind of thing. So that's pretty much all I've got going on for now.
Thank you. So now, under open, open business, we will talk about the approval of the, the bid on the crack seal project at the airport. So as we discussed in the work session, we need a motion to accept the low bid on the crack seal project, base bid two with alt one for schedule two, continuance to T.D.O.G. grant amendment.
I'll make a motion to be fed.
Charles made a motion to accept it, do I got a second?
I'll second it.
Lyndon Baines, second, and any discussion?
Gail, could you share about the money? Yes, I'll, I'll read what they have put in here. T.D.O., there is a, the crack seal coating that they preferred us to use, so they had us to add that to the bid. And they also had us add to the bid where we done the new tee hangers and done the paving around it, to add that, to seal it too, while it was still new, and keep it a longer life. So it made the whole, it made it come up $12,756.50. The total bid is $63,760, or $67 to do the crack seal project, including the new pavement. And pending, you know, T.D.O.'s approval on the amendment of the $12,000, the city's additional cost would be $639. And that is with the Lynn Sanford construction.
Any more discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Lyndon Baines.
For.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Vanessa Matthews. All four, none against.
Motion carries. So now we have a financial statement. So now the financial statement for general fund is And the water fund is $1,248,007.62. The gas is $1,789,056.32. The total of all three funds are $3,835, like, $3,835,343.89. For the bills for July, oh. Oh, yeah, sorry, scratch that. So do I have a motion to approve the financials for these three funds? Have a motion by Vanessa, seconded by Charles. Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Lyndon Baines.
For.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Vanessa Matthews.
For.
All four, none against.
Do motion carries. Now the bills for July. And for the natural gas bills, the total for the month is $354,743.66. Do I have a motion to pay the bills totaling for July?
I'll make a motion to pay the bill for July.
Okay, I got a first by Becky, I need a second motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lyndon, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Lyndon.
For.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Vanessa Matthews.
For.
All four, none against.
Motion carries. Okay, and the next on the agenda is approval of the police department hiring.
They had three applicants. Stephanie Ferguson, Christopher Martin, and Steve Taylor.
So now we just let Ken talk.
We conducted the interviews. My recommendation is Christopher Martin. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion. You need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, I'll second it.
We have a first by Becky, a second by Vanessa. Any discussion?
Where's she from? I mean, where's he from, sorry?
I think he lives in the edge of Morton County.
Any more discussion?
How many applicants were there?
Three.
Actually, there was four, it was certified, and only one of them couldn't make it because he's working, so there was only three interviews.
He was certified and couldn't make it?
Yeah, he was working, he's working at his current job.
Was there not any way that could be arranged to get him to...
Well, it was kind of pressed for time, the way I understand it with the mayor, and Monday was the only day we could do it. So it was compressed within three hours. And he was on a 12-hour shift, and he couldn't be.
Can that not be arranged, I mean, to interview the other applicant?
Yeah, if that's what you guys want to do, I mean...
Have you looked at the application?
Yes.
Is it even worth the time to you?
Well, I mean, I talked to him on the phone, went to coffee, and he's the one that told me he couldn't make it, so...
He is qualified?
Yes.
Or is he live there?
He actually lives just down the road, he's, he's working in Alden.
Who is it?
I believe his name's Christopher Ferguson.
You strike out from the minutes?
No. It is added, it should be fine.
He submitted an application.
He submitted.
He submitted an application?
Yes.
I just thought if they had another job, they...
He may just get some feedback where he isn't working at. I think he's looking for another place to work, so...
Oh, is it worth?
Well, I don't wish that.
Is that unreasonable?
Sorry, I mean, are you rescinding your motion? I mean, no, okay.
Any more discussion? Any more questions for Ken? Okay, motion carries, roll call vote, please.
Lyndon Baines.
Against.
Charles Cooper.
Yes.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Vanessa Matthews.
For.
Two, four, two against.
You get to break time.
Yeah, it's all up to you.
What was the other choices, I'm sorry? I didn't think I had to be put this predicament.
Yeah, when there's a tie, the mayor has to vote. Stephanie Ferguson, and Christopher Martin is who Ken's recommending, and then Steve Taylor.
I'm about against.
So motion fails. Three, three, two, four, and three against.
So now what do we do?
Make a motion for the other one, right?
Or you can, or if you want to interview, you can make a motion for, to add that motion to the... Basically, any direction there? Whatever you have. So you have the option of choosing somebody else from, from the list that has been interviewed, or you can request for more interviews, or it's you guys, whatever your choice is.
So I can make a motion that we continue it.
And then re...
And then re-. But you just need to know that, that they're down to seven, eight?
Down to seven, eight?
Seven.
Yeah.
We've got one with their hand broke, so you may, I mean, you can still do this, but you might wanna call a special call meeting after he does the interviews. I mean, that'd be up to you guys, but I just wanted to throw that out there. So we've got a motion. Motion to continue until Ken can interview the other applicant. Motion to continue until other applicant can be interviewed.
Okay, I need a second to that motion, to Vanessa's motion. No second, so now what I do?
Get the hold.
Okay. Failed, lack of votes. Lack of seconds, okay? So we open up the floor for what now?
Motion for another person on the list to get, let me... I'll make a motion to nominate Steve Taylor.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to nominate Steve Taylor from the list by Lyndon Baines, seconded by Charles Cooper. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote.
Lyndon Baines.
For.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
No.
Vanessa Matthews.
No.
Try it again.
Yeah, so you'll have to... Do the tie.
So we have the last one of the list.
The Stephanie Ferguson.
Oh, this is hard. Something will happen. Can we discuss again?
Ken, is there any way we can go in, I mean, to meet in a closed?
To dis...
Not to decide?
No.
To discuss?
Not to discuss, no.
You can, for information... You can, for information, if you have legal questions?
Uh, yes.
If you have legal questions, we can, and I can answer those questions in a private setting. That's all, I can only answer questions.
Okay. I have questions.
Okay. Then do you want to... You want to set aside for a second?
We can go with the rest of the agenda first.
Sure, and then we'll resume this at the end of the meeting, and then we'll re-convene the meeting then, after... Okay. So, okay?
So now what do I do?
What was next on the...
Okay, that would be, are we going to be end to the agenda?
Yeah, we're dead now.
So, next is, um, to add a motion to the agenda about the, uh, 2 million gallon pump bids. For the, for Steve. I need a motion to add that to the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Lyndon has made the motion, Charles has seconded it, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Lyndon Baines?
Four.
Charles Cooper?
Four.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay, motion carries. So now, now we can talk about it, right? So, now we just add it, right?
Yeah, we just added it, so now, if Steve, if I need any questions from Steve, he can.
Any questions from Steve about the bids, and Tom about the bids?
So, like, we talked about in the work session, it's that 3 million gallon pump at the work...
Yeah. I make a motion, we, you know, get it replaced. It's gonna have to be done, but I make a motion now. There's nowhere, there's nowhere around this.
Is her motion to accept the low bid?
Yeah.
And to replace?
It's very important that we get it fixed as fast as...
From Charles Cooper.
So we have a motion to accept the low bid for the 3 million gallon pump. Set the grinder, is that what it is? By Charles Cooper, intake, sorry, by Charles Cooper. So I don't have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by, um, Lyndon Baines. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Lyndon?
Four.
Charles Cooper?
Four.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay, motion carries. Now, Kelly. Now we would like to invite Kelly Kingsley to come up and speak, please.
Thank you much for allowing me to, uh, come on, I have to walk around with that. Thank y'all for letting me, uh, maybe I can talk loud enough, Kevin, if I can. I want to, Vanessa, you're up. I've got a handout for each of y'all. And I'm gonna get into it in just a moment and explain just what I have for you. Lyndon, and Sabrina. Becky. 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 Now, what I'm handing y'all are copies, sort of, to wrap up. Charles, here you are. Let me give you darling's. Bailey? If you want, just want to wind up with that Sabrina here.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, but anyway, I'll get, uh, y'all, here's, oh, by the way, here's you some of those high-dollar legislative pens, too. Because I want to pass out. Okay. Charles, can you pass those over now, Charles, for me? Now, also... Becky, did you... Did y'all get a good look?
I did.
No?
I did.
Uh, Charles?
I got one two years ago.
Guess what, you don't get one because you've already gotten one, because this is the same one I've already given you, okay?
Okay.
So you're not offended at me? Or upset at me, okay? Becky. I think you got one, too, did you? Okay. Charles, Lyndon, you got yours.
Yeah.
Okay. Here you go.
Thank you.
Sure. Hey, you did get one? Did I give you one, Becky?
Uh, style.
Huh?
Yeah, you did like style.
Because this is the same issue. Same edition, but anyway, quickly, what you have in your folder. And this, this is just an FYI, I'm going, post-session, and that's where we're in right now, session concluded around mid-May. So that gives us that want to take the time to get to all the county commission meetings. Uh, and in our case, we've got five, we represent five counties, and four, then, act of Fentress here, but then also we have 13 city councils, and seven school boards. So that gives us an opportunity to get around and see everyone, and, and just, uh, just bring you up to date on this. The first, the first thing you have in here is the Tennessee, you know, is, is a handout by the comptroller. And this, this gives you an overview of, uh, this fiscal year's budget. It's by, by the way, it's, it's the largest that's ever been, that we've ever passed. But there's reasons for that. Uh, it's, as I said, so thirty, just over 37 billion. But, folks, our revenues are just absolutely going through the roof. To give you a quick example, the latest number I have, June, the, uh, the number was, uh, we, in revenues, we, as a state, we took in just over $59 million above, above what we had budgeted. So things are, are good, I mean, you know, this, they're, they're quite, they're quite good. And, uh, we're, we're very proud of that, and as you, as you go through this, and I know, I'm cognizant of your time, but, uh, please take a look at this, and if, if you should have any questions, please holler at me. The next thing you have is this. Mine's colored, yours being, yours, yours is BMW. But there's one thing that I want to, to state, our, the big item this, this past session, which caused us to go in, you know, caused it to be a little lengthy, was the, the Governor's Improve Act. And, uh, it was, it, it addresses the, immediately, the 962, uh, projects that we have across the state that are needed. Now, these projects are both bridges and new road construction. Macon, your counties, our counties, Macon and Clay are overall in pretty darn good shape. But then when we get to Fentress, and, and portions of Pickett, and certainly Scott, they're not so good. And, uh, and so this, this addresses, uh, many of that, many of those things. And let me, as, as I point my thumb, notice on page one where my thumb is, and I just want to highlight that this is not the Governor's publication. This is the comptroller's publication, there's, we have three constitutional officers, the comptroller, the treasurer, and the secretary of state. And the... None of one of these three people, and I'll put it that way, are appointed by the governor, they're elected by both the House and the Senate. So they, they're independent of the governor's office. So what you read in this, when you get into it, this is totally independent and straightforward, straight from the horse's mouth, the comptrollers. And this gives you an idea of, uh, of just how this is going to affect, uh, actually, uh, the, the entire state. The next, the next piece that I have is this, this lady, colleague, State Representative Susan Lynn. Now, why have I got her picture? Well, she had the time to sit down and do a Q and A, question and answer, for her constituents. But she also sent this to each one of us, uh, House members, if we wanted to use it. And, you know, again, we've got some great questions here that addresses social media, just really, eh, wasn't fair in some, in some cases, the, uh... The misinformation that was, was out on social media about this, about this act, this, this piece of legislation. But this, this, I think, will really give you a greater insight, also, even more so, from, from what I have from the comptroller. The next piece is this. You got a front and back, and, uh, this, this tells you just what we've got going, uh, in, in Fentress, and for that matter, across the district. But, uh, right up, uh... Well, where is it? Uh, we've got, uh, we've got Fentress in here, South York Highway from north of Jamestown to State Route 32. We've got, I know we've got $10 million budgeted, it's one of the highway, from the foot of the mountain to Static. There's, uh, that's on, that's one of these 962, uh, projects that's on this hit list. And right now, I know there's $10 million budgeted for safety enhancements, there's not, I think, I understand, they're going to take out two or three or four, uh, really serious curves on that stretch, and include signage. Uh, actually, I've got a, and in addition to that, I have, uh, actually, a resolution from our county commission, your official county commission, about, uh, the study or implementation of a truck runoff down there, uh, down near the foot of the mountain. So, we'll wait and see, but anyway, this gives you, the most, to the front side, the back side, gives you the revenues, just what it's going to mean to Fentress County, what it's going to mean to the city of Jamestown and the city of Allen. Always interested in unemployment, the next piece, uh, or the latest, or is the latest number that I have on, on our district, Fentress County, in May, you came in with a wonderful number, 3.7, unbelievable unemployment percentage. Uh, June went up, uh, to 5.2, but that's still pretty darn good. You know, just recently, you know, the governor, uh, announced that we had experienced our lowest unemployment rate ever in the history of the state, it was under 4%. So, that's good, and the rest is just FYI to you, um, we've got a colored map of congressional district with the demographics, as well as your senate district, and as well as your house district. So with that, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to serve you in Nashville, and, uh, and wish you my very best. Thank you all very much. If you have any questions, holler.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to re-astase. Re-astase, sorry. Motion by Vanessa, seconded by...
I'll second.
Becky. Now we need it. No? Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Lyndon Baines?
Four.
Charles Cooper?
Four.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay, motion carries.
Recession's just for a few minutes.
About 10 minutes, that'll be good.
Yeah.
We're gonna re-astase for 10 minutes. Okay, we would like to open the meeting back up.
You, you have a motion, you have a motion on the floor. Motion by, uh, Lyndon Baines, seconded by Charles Cooper to hire Steve Cook, Steve, Steve Taylor, sorry. On a roll call vote with two against and two four.
So at this time, against? Motion fails?
Yes.
Do I have another motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we re-interview. And how much detail do I need to do? How did I, how did the caller do?
A motion to...
Re-interview.
With all?
With all aldermen present? With all aldermen.
And city attorney present?
Okay. All, all applicants?
All applicants.
Okay.
I'll second you.
Okay, we have a motion by Vanessa, seconded by Lyndon Baines, any discussion? Okay, that's why I'm calling this, okay? So, um, a roll call vote, please.
Lyndon Baines?
Four.
Charles Cooper?
Four.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All four, none against.
Motion carries. Do we have any more motions on the floor?
I make a motion that we hire, do a temporary hire, uh, not any of the applicants, and until this can be...
Until the interviews.
Yes, until the interviews.
I have a motion on the floor that they do emergency hire, um, until the interviews are completed. By Vanessa Matthews, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Becky Duncan, any discussion on that? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Lyndon Baines?
Four.
Charles Cooper?
Four.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All four, none against.
Motion carries. Do we have another motion on the floor?
We approve.
Oh, sorry.
We approve the lines, we allow the...
We took that off.
We took that off, yeah.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we call a special call meeting for... What's the date?
Be the 21st. Be the 21st.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for a special call meeting on Monday, the 21st. By Vanessa Matthews, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Charles Cooper. Any discussion?
Do you want to state the, the purpose of that meeting, please, that special call meeting, in the motion, please?
To hire the full-time police officer.
Do I need to restate that?
A motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Charles Cooper, to have a special call meeting on Monday, the 21st, at six, five, okay, at five, um, to, uh, hire a full-time position at the police department.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, roll call vote.
Lyndon Baines?
Four.
Charles Cooper?
Four.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All four, none against.
Motion carries.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I have a motion on the floor, by Charles Cooper, and a second by Vanessa, to adjourn. All four?
Four.
Adjourned.